Saskatoon's mayor and city councillors prepare for a big debate. A look ahead at tomorrow's budget talks. A frontline worker is sounding the alarm on overdoses. Her message and the push to get people the help they need. And a new federal ruling sets a precedent on banned fund transparency. What it means moving forward.
This is CTV News with Chantel Saunders.
Good evening. Chantel is away tonight. I'm Laura Woodward. Saskatoon's mayor and city councillors are counting down the hours for multiple days of marathon meetings, all to set city finances for the next two years. And as Keenan Sorkan reports, homeowners and businesses are bracing for impact.
The stage is set to finalize the city's budget for the next two years. Administration has already lent council a helping hand, lowering preliminary tax hikes to 7.43% next year and 5.92% in 2027. Three weeks ago, the city called for taxes to go up 8.23%, with a smaller increase for the following year. The city has been candid about inflation and growth, putting pressure on the budget, saying these increases are necessary to maintain service levels. And businesses feel if some of the biggest tax hikes in the city's history don't give you anything extra, something needs to change.
It's becoming less and less sustainable and less and less affordable for people to live here and for job creators to do business here.
Six councillors will be looking at a two-year budget for the first time. And Mayor Cynthia Block will oversee her first budget talks with more than 100 options to reduce the eventual tax hike. ABIG says there's an opportunity in front of them.
Challenge the status quo, dig deep and demand better of services and programs that may be underperforming.
Block is challenging the status quo with cities across the country looking at tax increases similar or larger than Saskatoon's. She says property taxes aren't cutting it any longer.
We want a new deal. Cities right across the country know that's necessary. And I think the only way we get there is if we lean in together.
Until then, ABIG is asking city council to seriously consider what departments or programs are meeting expectations. Other business leaders say rotating audits of every department could help find more savings.
They could, in fact, show taxpayers where the dollars are going.
In 2023, councillors softened the blow by deferring large spending items, raising fees and raising utility rates. Now we'll see how this council navigates a similar challenge. Keenan Sorkan, CTV News, Saskatoon.
A recovering drug addict who is now a frontline worker is calling for action tonight, shining a light on the barriers on the recovery systems in the province. Carla Schinkrock has that story.
We're losing people. They're falling through the cracks.
Chantel Huell spends her days connecting to those on the streets of Saskatoon.
Every person that we meet is actually human and they deserve to live.
She's constantly reminded of the human cost. After surviving addictions herself, she now helps others. She questions government plans to get people the help they need.
People calling the shots that have never lived addictions, that have never been homeless, that have never stuck a needle in their arm before tucking their children in good night, they've never lived on the street.
Last week Saskatchewan's Health Ministry issued toxic drug alerts for Saskatoon and Regina. After that, the provincial NDP called for immediate expansion of detox and treatment services.
People are dying every single day. People are overdosing from the poisonous drugs that are out on the street.
The Minister of Mental Health and Addictions Laurie Carr said this today, about 500 new treatment spaces being introduced.
We already have just about 300 of those spaces in place. And of course, with the goal of getting to those 500 as soon as we can, Mr. Speaker. So we look forward to all of those spaces being open, evaluating exactly what is in our system and what needs to come next.
Last week, Carr said, once they have all the spaces open, a central intake system should be up and running, which will provide a comprehensive list of those who need help and work towards getting them appropriate level of service. Huell wants to see better coordination between treatment centers and outreach workers, which could save lives.
A person with lived experience, I have seven years in recovery.
The province told CTV News in an email, "Last week, we announced an additional investment of up to $20 million over three years to expand homelessness services and enhance supports for individuals experiencing homelessness." Carla Schinkrock, CTV News, Saskatoon. All right, Jeff, we had a pretty nice weekend and then today a little cooler. Am I right or did I just feel?
Oh, no. You are correct. And tomorrow will be a little cooler, then a little cooler, a little cooler after that. It's a slow trend downwards. I'm not going to say it's not a rocket ride to cold town, but it's a journey to cold town. Because yes, we do have a lot of Arctic air making its way down south, impacting many areas. Now, we are keeping our eye on this system that is bringing a lot of snow, particularly to southwestern Saskatchewan. Higher elevations like Cypress Hills might see up to 25 centimeters of snow. So yes, there is snow in the forecast. How much of that will come Saskatoon's way or Prince Albert's way? Well, we'll tell you about that later on.
Thanks, Jeff. Our CMP are investigating a deadly crash south of Watrous. Our CMP say it happened on Friday night around nine o'clock and involved a single vehicle. Paramedics reported the driver of the vehicle dead at the scene. He's been identified as a 60-year-old man from Watrous. Police were called to a Saskatoon parking lot yesterday for a report of a gunshot. Police say it happened just before 10 o'clock in the 600 block of Avenue X South. An 18-year-old man from Prince Albert was arrested in a dog park nearby. Police say the gun used was in the man's possession. He's facing six charges, including obstruction and intentionally discharging a firearm. And police are investigating a stabbing in Saskatoon yesterday. Police were called to the 300 block of 20th Street West for a report of a man injured in front of a business. Police say the 37-year-old man was suffering from stab wounds. He was taken to hospital for non-life-threatening injuries. Police believe the stabbing happened on Avenue D South. The Saskatchewan NDP introduced a rent control bill in the legislature. It would tie future rent increases to the Consumer Price Index. But as Wayne Mantika reports, the legislation has a slim chance of being approved.
Saskatchewan has led the nation in rent increases over the past two years, according to rentals.ca. It's up by 24%. The NDP is continuing its push for rent control.
But the reality is, the biggest offenders here are large corporate landlords that are not building new buildings. They're coming in, they are jacking up rent and they're taking profits out of the province.
The opposition has introduced a private members bill that would limit annual rent increases to the change in the Consumer Price Index. Currently, it's about 2.4%. A group of seniors who have faced annual rent increases support rent control.
So the first year our rent went up $70. The second year it went up $160 a month. And this past lease, $70. So there's no consistency as to why.
About half the provinces currently have rent control in place. Some community advocates believe it's time that Saskatchewan joined the list.
It is obvious in recent years that rents have become excessive. The fallout from that is significant.
Landlords warn that rent control could discourage construction of new units and create a rental housing shortage.
And we need to be saying yes to housing and allowing our providers to make investments in Saskatchewan and continue to provide much-needed, high-quality rental homes for families.
The Saskatchewan government has consistently opposed rent control.
In most jurisdictions where they do that, where they tie it to something, it sounds good on the surface, but what happens is you've got to incentivize more housing units to be built.
The NDP has been strongly advocating for rent control in recent months. But with the government holding the majority in the legislature, the proposal is likely to be defeated. Wayne Mantika, CTV News, Regina.
Health officials are warning of the measles exposure risk following confirmed cases in Saskatoon. The Saskatchewan Health Authority says if you were at any of these businesses, Princess Auto, Crazy Bins, or Once Upon a Child, two weeks ago on November 10th, to monitor for measles symptoms, call the health line if you were exposed and unvaccinated. Symptoms include fever, cough, red blotchy rash and small white spots inside the mouth. A federal court ruling has set a new precedent when it comes to banned funds. Hallie Mandrick has those details.
Three years ago, Hans McCarthy began raising questions regarding the finances of his community Frog Lake First Nation in Alberta. He says Frog Lake's trust fund held revenues from natural resources located on banned lands. In 2013, McCarthy alleged the funds totaled around $102 million. But in 2024, less than $9 million remained in the account.
There's a lot of corruption in First Nation communities. And that's one of the things that are messing up what's going on in First Nation communities. To pursue this sets a precedence for, like you said, activists and people wanting to know what's going on with our monies in our communities.
After partnering up with the Canadian Taxpayers Federation, McCarthy filed a Federal Access to Information Act to acquire banned council resolutions regarding the funds. Indigenous Services Canada initially refused to release the documents, so the matter was brought before the federal court.
So in Hans's court application, we argued that both the federal government and local First Nations leaders have a duty to provide this type of financial transparency to banned members who request them. And the federal court agreed with our argument.
A Vancouver judge has ordered that within 30 days, McCarthy will be allowed to see the documents that he has been fighting to access for over three years. While he is interested to see the financial information, McCarthy says it's more about the precedent that this decision could set.
It's really exciting. It's really emotional. Like it's hard to put into words, like I had a hard time sleeping the past couple of days because it is because of how excited we are. And a lot of people have been getting older me all across North America. So it's pretty big news in First Nations country.
CTV reached out to Indigenous Services Canada. However, they were unable to provide a response in time for broadcast. Hallie Mandrick, CTV News, Saskatoon.
A charge against a man accused of trying to extort a former Saskatchewan politician has been stayed. The trial was set to begin today, but the charge has been stayed by the Crown. Harpinder Baswa was charged in 2023 by Regina police for allegedly extorting former MLA Gary Graywall. Graywall had told police that he was approached by the suspect, who asked him to support him in a local election. When Graywall refused, the suspect allegedly threatened to cause harm to his personal and professional life. CTV News has reached out to the Ministry of Justice for comment on why the charge was stayed, but did not hear back by broadcast. The unveiling of a model ship, the first HMCS Regina Royal Canadian Navy ship, is being introduced at a pub in Regina. Sierra de Souza Butts has more on the local brewery and its connection to the Navy.
Aiming to restore the history of the first HMCS Regina, a display is being commemorated at a local pub.
It's very nice for my sailors who join and who serve here in Regina, Saskatchewan, to have a pub that is just so friendly and welcoming to members of the Royal Canadian Navy.
A model of the original Flower Class Corvette is being introduced at Bushwhacker Brew Pub, capturing the details of the ship that served from 1942 to 1945 in the Battle of the Atlantic.
The most amazing part of that story is they were lost trying to help another ship, trying to rescue their sailors. And they were torpedoed themselves, losing 30 members of their crew. And miraculously, like the ship sunk in 30 seconds.
Current-serving HMCS Regina members based in Esquimalt, BC, helped remodel the display, presenting it as a gift to their home away from home.
Current HMCS Regina, they playfully call their officers' mess Bushwhacker West and consider us to be Bushwhacker East here in the middle of Saskatchewan.
Bushwhacker Brew Pub's support for the Canadian military goes as far back as 34 years ago, when its late founder and president visited HMCS Regina twice.
There's actually three different models of the original HMCS Regina. And what I've been told is this one is the most accurate and the most detailed. So we're very pleased to have a model of this quality in our brew pub.
The model's new home port will be accompanying other military memorabilia at the pub, sitting on a shelf in front of a picture of the current HMCS Regina. Sierra de Souza Butts, CTV News, Regina.
The 54th edition of the Canadian Western Agribition kicked off in Regina today with the burning of the brand. Jacob Carr has that story.
The Honourable Bernadette McIntyre was chosen for the Burning of the Brand this year at Agribition. McIntyre has attended all 54 iterations of the event and says getting to take part in the tradition was exhilarating.
I was so excited because I've been seeing people do this for decades. Very, very exciting. And they do, they will, I'll get to keep that eventually. They cut it up and they give it to me, so.
The annual event that brings in people from across Canada is also special to Miss Rodeo Agribition 2025 Abby Hartey.
I am Saskatchewan. I am more than just land and latitude, more than grain silos and gravel roads. I am skies that stretch forever, fields that feed a nation and people who ride for something bigger than themselves.
The 21-year-old from Edam was crowned Miss Rodeo Canada 2026 in October and is the first to earn the national title while also holding the Miss Rodeo Agribition crown.
It's incredible to be able to represent something that you're so passionate about and to be able to write that down and take that to a competition like Miss Rodeo Canada and explain to the people in that room exactly what event I'm representing and where I'm from.
For organizers, Agribition is also about educating the younger generation on the importance of agriculture in the province.
You talk to almost any of the older generation here and they all remember coming as a kid. They again, going through the barns, seeing the education, seeing the machinery. Again, it's just important to really showcase, you know, that Saskatchewan is agriculture.
Kindop says Agribition is about bringing people together, but the spirit of the event is perhaps best summed up by the Miss Rodeo Canada 2026 in waiting.
But if you really want to know who I am, come visit me in the final week of November. That's when my soul stirs. When the fences get mended, the trailers roll in and the city of Regina puts on her boots and goes western.
Jacob Carr, CTV News, Regina.
The resurgence of Saskatchewan's film industry is creating opportunities for aspiring actors. This weekend, several stars of tomorrow showcase their talent for industry leaders. Wayne Mantika has the story.
It was an evening for Saskatchewan actors to be discovered.
Message tonight is anyone can do it. I mean, we have people that have just started out a few months ago. We've had people that have been in the industry for over 15 years.
Actors hoping to land roles in future films performed before an audience that included film producers seeking talent.
Through auditions, you also discover new people. And I know that we had a few people that really surprised me and I've never heard of this person or seen this person and then they're perfect for the role.
The actors have been developing skills through classes and coaching at Regina's Bar S Studios.
There are a ton of talented people here and people don't need to move to Toronto or Vancouver. They can start a career right here. We always say that a career in Saskatchewan film and television is not just possible, it's probable.
Among those assessing the talent was veteran Regina film producer Kevin DeWalt.
You need good actors to make good movies. And events like this is an opportunity to see the kind of young talent and hopefully there'll be some stars that come out of it.
The return of government incentives is driving demand for homegrown talent. These actors hope to be among the stars who play a role in rebuilding Saskatchewan's film industry. Wayne Mantika, CTV News, Regina.
A Canadian music legend from Saskatoon will be celebrated at the Junos in March. Joni Mitchell is set to receive a lifetime achievement award.
From Blue to her latest return to the stage, you know, Joni just continues to inspire us with her artistry. So congratulations to Joni Mitchell.
The singer-songwriter is going to be recognized for her incredible impact on music. She will be only the third recipient of the top honor. Organizers also announced that Hamilton's Arkells will play the March 29th awards show in their hometown. Nominations are now open for the Saskatoon Citizen of the Year presented by CTV. The Citizen of the Year is given to a person who exemplifies excellence in community service and is making a difference. To find out how to nominate that special someone, guides are available on our website. The deadline to submit your nomination is Friday, December 5th. Still to come on CTV News, progress on a potential new pipeline from Alberta to the BC coast. And officials continue to hunt for a grizzly bear behind an attack on a school group. You're watching CTV News live from downtown Saskatoon. Thanks for staying with us. Later this week, Ottawa and the Alberta government are expected to sign a memorandum of understanding on energy and climate change that sources say will likely pave the path for a new pipeline. CTV's Annie Bergeron Oliver has that story.
Another handshake between Alberta Premier Danielle Smith and Prime Minister Mark Carney is expected this week. And with that comes the conclusion of talks about a deal that will set the framework for an oil pipeline from Alberta to the BC coast.
Big picture, what we're looking to do and what we are doing is a series of major investments, nation-building projects that make our country stronger, more independent from the United States.
Sources say the memorandum of understanding that's expected to be signed this week will push the pipeline project forward and will necessitate some kind of carve-out from the tanker ban along the BC coast. It's also expected to scrap the planned federal emissions cap, bolster carbon capture and change the industrial carbon tax. Many environmental groups say the cost of a new oil pipeline isn't worth it.
Definitely not enough is happening here. This is not striking a balance. It is not a grand bargain at all. It's a raw deal.
BC's premier David Eby is also against a new oil pipeline. Eby says he told Carney today that if it goes ahead, coastal First Nations need to approve and the use of taxpayers' dollars should be limited.
My message to Prime Minister was that either there should be a cap on the taxpayer dollars invested in this project or there should be a prohibition on taxpayer dollars invested in this project. Or if it is going to be taxpayer-funded, that British Columbia get access to a $50 billion federally-funded project as well.
Alberta plans to leverage private sector capital to get this pipeline built. But the MOU doesn't guarantee that will ever happen. The federal government says it wants the backing of British Columbia as well as indigenous communities along the route. Annie Bergeron Oliver, CTV News, Ottawa.
The hunt continues tonight for a grizzly bear behind the attack on a group of elementary school students last week. The BC Conservation Officer Service says they are looking for a female and two young bears around Bella Coula off BC's central coast. About 20 students and staff were on a field trip Thursday when the bear came out of the forest and attacked them. Three children and a teacher were sent to hospital with serious injuries. A crucial decision today in a US federal court. A judge dismissing criminal cases against a former FBI director and New York Attorney General. As Joy Melvin reports, both cases were plagued with procedural questions.
James Comey was Donald Trump's FBI director in his first term and at the top of the president's political enemies list after he led the investigation into alleged ties between the Trump campaign and Russia. Today, vindication.
The message has to be sent that the President of the United States cannot use the Department of Justice to target his political enemies. I don't care what your politics are, you have to see that as fundamentally un-American.
The case dismissed after federal judge Cameron Curry concluded Lindsey Halligan, Donald Trump's handpicked lawyer, who had no experience as a prosecutor, was illegally appointed. Ms. Halligan had no lawful authority to present the indictment, the judge said, concluding they were unlawful exercises of executive power. New York's Attorney General Letitia James says she is heartened by the judge's ruling. In 2022, James successfully sued Trump and the Trump Corporation for millions of dollars in a civil fraud case.
Donald Trump engaged in deceptive business practices and tremendous fraud.
The president then went after her over a mortgage loan, but the judge also dismissed that case on the same grounds as Comey, saying the prosecutor's appointment was invalid.
The whole thing was improper. I mean, I think this was an obvious one. I would have been shocked if the judge allowed this case to continue. So I think these two cases are doomed, whether procedurally or substantively.
Comey's lawyer says he can't be recharged because of the statute of limitations has passed, but it is possible they try and recharge James. The White House says today's judgment will not be their final word. Joy Melvin, CTV News, Washington.
Hi, I'm Allery.
And I'm Eden.
And we are from the St. Joseph High School production of Newsies.
Get your tickets for November 26th to 29th.
Buy them at guardiantheater.ca or contact the front desk office of St. Joseph High School. So what's the weather like, Jeff?
Well, for opening night, it is going to be, well, a little the cool side because we're into a bit of a cooling trend. But let's take a closer look at what we can expect for Wednesday. So Wednesday, it says Saturday, 7:30, should say Wednesday. Well, Saturday, you'll still have a show at 7:30 though. But Wednesday, we've got ourselves minus seven degrees, mainly cloudy skies. And once again, just a reminder, guardiantheater, guardianstheater.ca or you can phone the front desk at the office there at St. Joseph High School for Newsies, which opens on Wednesday. All right, let's take a look at our numbers right now. Our current temperature, minus five degrees, the same for Prince Albert, minus five in the Battleford. So if your lucky number was minus five, is there a lucky number minus five? Well, there you go. And not particularly windy. We've got ourselves some cool temperatures and it's going to get even colder as we roll into the rest of the week and we'll talk about that later on. So our almanac for Saskatoon today, minus four degrees, that is one degree above seasonal. We won't be saying above seasonal for quite a while now. Nine degrees in 1962 was the record warm temperature. Where were you in 62? All right, American Graffiti, minus 33 in 1996, the record cold temperature. 8:42 is when the sun came up and the sun went down at 5:04.
Coming up, the official start of the season for lobster fishing. We take you to Nova Scotia for what's known as Dumping Day.
All right, let's take a look and see what's going on with the sky cam shot here. Oh, a lovely shot of the South Saskatchewan and the bridge traffic. And yeah, things are looking okay. The exteriors can be a little bit elusive, or we should say deceptive because it's lovely, but it is cold out there and getting colder. Let's take a look at our satellite and radar shot here. Really keeping our eye on this big area of low pressure, marching through Alberta, through Saskatchewan, into the Dakotas, a little bit obviously into Montana too, but ultimately making a track towards the Midwest of the USA, not really impacting Manitoba. But there is a lot of snow expected in southern Saskatchewan. We'll talk about the snowfall warnings in just a bit. To recap, our temperatures, minus five degrees right across the board. A bit more cloud in Saskatoon than in Prince Albert and Battleford's under clear skies. A little breezier in the Battlefords as well, but not by much. Broadview, the provincial hotspot at three degrees, North Battleford, the cold spot at minus 12. Around the province we go, six degrees on the minus side in Lloydminster, minus three in Swift Current, minus one in Moose Jaw, Regina, and minus two in Yorkton, but plus one right now in Estevan. That's going to change. As you can see, in central parts of the province, temperatures ranging from minus seven degrees in Meadow Lake and Waskesu up to minus two degrees and that is in Rose Town. We do have a few other places at minus three, minus four in Nippon and Hudson Bay. Up north, temperatures aren't that much colder, quite frankly. Minus nine degrees in Collins Bay in Laurent, but minus four right now in Sandy Bay Island Falls. And down south, we still have Carlisle on the plus side of the thermometer, zero in Weyburn in Broadview. But then into the minus temperatures for everywhere else on this part of our map, minus four in East End, a number of communities sort of hovering around that minus two degree mark. Now on to our future cast. Well, there's that system that's marching southward into North Dakota and the American Midwest. And as you can see, tomorrow, not a lot of active weather across Saskatchewan and those pressure lines, those ISO bar lines staying way far apart. So not much of a wind at all tomorrow on Tuesday. So down south, down around, let's say we get to the Maple Creek area where we get into higher elevations around the Cypress Hills. They could see up to 25 centimeters of snow as we make our way towards South Central Saskatchewan. Those accumulation levels may be up around 10 centimeters of snow, but it's snowfall warnings nonetheless. Around the province we go, temperatures in and around that minus six or minus seven degree mark for northern Saskatchewan, slightly warmer in parts of West Central Saskatchewan, minus three for Kinder's Lee and Rose Town. Temperatures hovering around minus two for the southwest tomorrow with a mix of sky conditions. A similar temperature pattern, maybe a bit cooler, but only by about a degree in the southeast. And east-central Saskatchewan, temperatures hanging around minus four degrees tomorrow as we take a look at cloudy or mainly cloudy skies. Dropping down to minus 13 for the Battlefords tonight with some fog patches showing up. Mainly cloudy skies on Tuesday, minus six degrees and a slow and steady march into cooler temperatures, minus 15 by Sunday. Prince Albert and area, minus nine overnight, minus four tomorrow. Not much of a wind though, minus seven on Wednesday, minus eight on Thursday, into the minus double digits starting on Friday, minus 16 on Sunday. And Saskatoon expecting clearing skies, but some fog patches showing up overnight. Minus five degrees tomorrow for a high, so seasonal temperatures. And then below seasonal as you make our way through the rest of the work week into the weekend, minus 14 on Sunday.
Welcome, Penem, to the glorious reaping of District 12.
Nice hat. This is the trailer for Hunger Games Sunrise on the Reaping. It explores Penem 24 years before Katniss. The trailer gives fans a glimpse into the origin of Hamich, a character that was pre- a character that was previously played by Woody Harrelson. This movie comes out next November. Chadwick Boseman has posthumously been honored with a Hollywood star. Friends and family gathered to honor the Black Panther actor. Boseman's widow Simone placed a pair of his shoes on his newly minted star so that he could step on the memorial alongside his family. Boseman died in 2020 at the age of 43 after a battle with colon cancer.
What have you done to me?
When the man's an empty kettle. Sorry, different, different show. Wicked for Good is conjuring up magic at the box office, earning more than its predecessor did in its debut. Studio estimates say the new movie earned 150 million bucks in its first days in the North American theaters, and that's as well as $226 million globally. Now You See Me, Now You Don't was second at the box office for the weekend, followed by Predator: Badlands. Ooh, Badlands.
All right, Jeff, you were out earlier today getting into the Christmas spirit.
That's right. It involved food. Myrna and Bev are with us today and we are finding out about a long-held tradition here at Christchurch Anglican. It is the festive lunch. So first of all, thank you for letting us come to the church. And Myrna, for people who have never been before, what's the festive lunch?
It's soups and croissants and everything sweet, as you can see on the table behind us. And it's an awesome time.
Now, over and above the wonderful food that's being served here, Bev, I understand there's also a few things for sale.
Yes, there are. We have turkey pies. We made 300 of them and they're going along with poinsettias. And we also have a bake sale, a large bake sale.
Okay, that's great. Now, how much does it cost to take in the lunch?
It's $15 to come and includes all the door prizes that are going to be drawn for.
So lots of door prizes, some amazing food, and of course, you're helping out the community. Are there any particular programs that the Anglican Church women support with their, the funds they raise?
Well, we have a foster child in Africa that we look after for quite a few years, 20 years or more. And we help with the free suppers that they have here on Tuesday night.
There's lots of things going on here at Christchurch Anglican. So just before we go here, if people need more information, where can they go?
They could go to the Christchurch webpage on Facebook.
And I know there's also a webpage as well that you can go to, to check things out. So ladies, thank you so much. And I see that there's butter tarts there.
Yes, there is.
Mmm, butter tarts.
All right, you have some pictures for us.
Sure. And they're pretty sweet too. Oh, what a segue. Let's take a look at this one. This one comes to us from Lori Dawn. Start of a beautiful winter is what she says. A lovely shot there. Then from Michelle and Kirk, this is from yesterday. Soaking up the sun with some great neighbors. Looks like they're having a great outdoor adventure there. And this one from Mandy Greiba, taken from inside my cabin at Sled Lake. And isn't that just a picture postcard? Wow, I love that. That is like a hallmark. So anyhow, maybe the hallmark will be calling. And if you'd like to send us an image, you can do so by sending it to ctvenews@cfqc.ca. No, cfqcnews@ctvn... Look at what's on the screen. I'm in a hurry. Scan the QR code. Go nuts.
Still to come on CTV News, the high stakes start to lobster season in Atlantic Canada. Lobster season has kicked off in southwestern Nova Scotia. About 1,200 lobster boats set out for what's called Dumping Day. As CTV's Jonathan McInnes reports, the most lucrative season is also the most dangerous.
Hours before the official start of the season in lobster fishing areas 33 and 34, crews were ready and the boats were running. Then they were off at 5:00 a.m. in the area around Yarmouth and 7:00 a.m. along the south shore from Shelbourne to Cow Bay.
It's just a big rush. Everybody wants to get to the same spot. So you just try not to bump into anybody and hope for the best.
As the boats head out to sea, hundreds watch from the shoreline, hoping for calm waters. All under the watchful eye of the Canadian Coast Guard, who sprung into action to tow one boat back to the wharf on Cape Sable Island.
So I just pray to God every day that everybody will be safe and make a prosperous season. And yeah, so hopefully they come back at the end of the day.
Traps are in the water, so we're good to go.
More than 1,400 boats are involved in the lobster industry in the two areas. Jamie Osborne's new vessel, the Grand Finale II, was one of them. He's been fishing for 50 years. He says increased operating costs is making it hard to pay the bills, especially when he doesn't know what he's going to be paid for his catch.
I mean, you're selling your product and you don't know what you're getting for. You know, it's, they could come down at the end of the week, say we're giving you $5 and a lot of guys wouldn't be happy because they wouldn't sell them if they knew it.
Osborne says he'd be happy with $10 a pound. Last year, the lobster fishing industry in southwest Nova hauled in a total catch worth $540 million. LFAs 33 and 34 stretch from Digby around to Eastern Passage. Traps set in those areas this morning can be hauled starting at midnight tonight. Jonathan McInnes, CTV News, Eastern Passage, Nova Scotia.
When we come back, Saskatchewan small businesses push for buying local this Christmas and a look at this weekend's Vanier Cup.
All right, let's take a look at our rural forecast. And those temperatures, while they're not crazy cold yet, we've got ourselves minus five in Lloydminster and Meadow Lake, minus three in Kindersley. Not too bad on outlook, minus two degrees, that's above seasonal. And then above seasonal temperatures for Melford, Hudson Bay, Watchers and Wynyard. But then things start to get a little more interesting later in the week. But for southern Saskatchewan, temperatures for the most part above seasonal, but some of these places may be digging out from some snow, which is expected to fall, particularly in southwestern Saskatchewan. We've got ourselves partly cloudy skies for Blaine Lake on Tuesday, a high of minus five, winds out of the west at 10. And Blaine Lake is one of the many communities where internet plans of up to one gig are available from Saskatoon.
Small businesses in Saskatchewan are urging people to shop local during this Christmas shopping season. The Canadian Federation of Independent Businesses says nationally, one-third of small businesses rely on holiday sales for a large portion of their revenue, yet 20% are expecting lower sales. And in Saskatchewan, business owners say they are facing increasing pressures when it comes to insurance costs and property taxes. The CFIB highlights that for each dollar spent, many small businesses put more money back into the community than some big-box retailers. Wanaskewin Heritage Park has won a national award for Indigenous tourism. The 2025 Canadian Tourism Awards were last week in Gatineau, Quebec honoring the best in a range of categories in the industry. Wanaskewin was the winner of the Indigenous Tourism Award for Excellence in Delivering Authentic, Innovative, and Meaningful Cultural Experiences. Saskatchewan had nine finalists across multiple categories, a record-setting year for the province. Wanaskewin says this award will fuel its journey towards UNESCO World Heritage Designation. The U of S Huskies came up short in the Vanier Cup this weekend. Damian Smith has the details from Mosaic Stadium in Regina.
It's a tough loss for the U of S Huskies, who have lost this game three times in the last five years.
It's meant a lot, you know, the program. It's, I know it's hard to put into words right now. It's kind of, it's crazy, you know, but I love the program, love the guys. I'm happy to spend my five years here with them.
But this game wasn't just about winning the school's first Vanier Cup in decades. It was about winning it for quarterback Anton Amendoud, who left the team mid-season after being diagnosed with lymphoma.
We wanted nothing more than to bring that trophy back to that guy. Fortunately, we're going to be, we're going to become an empty-handed, but we're bringing a lot of love to him.
For Montreal, the trip out west was worth it, led by Rookie of the Year quarterback Pepe Gonzalez, who threw for three touchdowns.
It's amazing. It's amazing to be rewarded for the hard work we put in the whole season. We had rainy days, we had snowing days, but the guys showed up to every practice and they give it 100% their best and that showed today.
The game was a one-possession game until Gonzalez hit Simon LaRose for a touchdown in the fourth quarter.
Took the timeout of the clock and then when we was in an obvious situation of running, we decided to play action. I did a great route. Pepe stole me a great ball. I was hoping it all worked out, man. After my touchdown, I knew, I knew that was like the dagger.
This is the second title in three years for Montreal, and the past four years have been titles won by teams in Quebec, with Laval being the other one winning in 2022 and 2024. Damian Smith, CTV News, Regina.
Coming up, a special pre-Christmas celebration in Saskatoon. Then Saskatchewan deaf and hard-of-hearing vendors host a holiday markets.
Hey there. Derek Justin here with the Saskatoon Crime Stoppers. This week on Crime Stoppers Unmasked, we're looking for the public's assistance on identifying the suspect who assaulted a loss prevention officer during the execution of her duties. On November 13th, 2025, in the 1500 block of 8th Street East, the suspect was witnessed by loss prevention officers attempting to leave the store with unpaid merchandise. When the LPO grabbed for the suspect's bag and to place him under arrest, the suspect violently attacked the female LPO by punching her in the face before running out of the store. The suspect, a frequent shoplifter, was described as male, fair-skinned, 25 to 30 years of age, and was wearing a camouflage jacket, black hat, black pants, black runners with white soles. Do you have information about this suspect or information about who is responsible? If so, please give us a call at 1-800-284-777, or leave a tip online at saskatouncrimestoppers.com. We pay cash rewards of up to $2,000 for information that leads to an arrest. Tips are completely anonymous. We don't want your name. We just want your assistance. Saskatoon Crime Stoppers. Do your part to stop crime in our community.
A special pre-Christmas celebration hit the streets Saturday with Rockin' Around Riversdale.
Merry Christmas. Ho, 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 ho. Thanks for coming, boys.
Crowds filled 20th Street and surrounding area Saturday with families taking in the festivities, including Santa and characters from Frozen. Organizers say the event is all about showcasing the diversity and creativity that make up this historic area while supporting small businesses as the holiday season ramps up.
Look at that, sleigh rides downtown.
On a beautiful weekend, so it's a good weekend for it.
It was, yeah, the weather was exceptional for this time of year.
Okay. And if it wasn't so warm for you, there's one inside. Here's the holiday craft market, and it was put on by Saskatchewan Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Services. It got underway at Market Mall yesterday. Baked goods, local honey, hand-sewn gifts, ornaments, and jewelry are just some of what filled the tables. It's only the second year for the market after making a stop in Regina last week. Organizers say it's a chance for deaf and hard-of-hearing creators to share their work and to connect with the community.
Just naturally, you kind of pick it up a little bit here and there. Might say like, what's the cost? Or thank you, things like that. Merry Christmas. So it's just a good opportunity to meet and interact with the deaf and hard-of-hearing people.
For me, it's so inspiring to see deaf and hard-of-hearing and deaf-blind individuals involved with marketing their wearers. We also have people who are involved, and they're not deaf or hard-of-hearing, but they are our allies.
And there are two quilts made by Deaf Saskatchewan seniors that are being raffled off. And you can see one of them is stitched with hand signs and tickets are available on the website, the Saskatchewan Deaf and Hard-of-Hearing Services. So some cool stuff, Jeff, this weekend.
Some very cool stuff, yes. And some things going on. And goodness knows, we'll only be seeing more and more of these things as we head into the coming weeks. Because, hey, it's only about a week, a month away, is what I would say.
You know, I was like surprised how long we...
It's a month from tomorrow.
I feel we had less time or more time. I don't know how to feel about it. It's coming up quick, but then I'm also like, I feel so prepared. So I don't know. I'm ready. I'm Christmas ready.
Well, good for you.
I don't want to brag, but there you go.
Well, you just did.
Thanks so much for watching. Good night.